All right, we'll call to order the Planning Commission for the City of Brainerd. Roll call.
Gorm.
Here.
Grisula.
Here.
Higgins. Peterson. Powell.
Here.
Erickson.
Present.
Norwood.
Here.
And Pledge of Legions.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then before a motion for approval of the agenda, did everybody get a chance to see the potential for the added item?
Yes.
Looking for a motion for amended, then?
No motion.
And with...
Second.
With...I did hear from Powell.
First.
Just for clarification, where would you like to put that addition?
Would be, I think, Item D under 7.
7D?
New business, Item D.
And we'll call that corner lot fences abutting an alley? Is that okay?
So.
Okay. Any further discussion? And all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And looking for a motion to approve, minutes?
Move to approve. Second.
And any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And on to 6A. Director Krambeck.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So St. Francis Catholic Church at 411 North 10th Street has submitted a request for a preliminary plat, final plat, a rezoning of 14 existing parcels from the TN1 Traditional Neighborhood 1 District into three new parcels zoned PSP, Public Semi-Public District. And in addition, the applicant has also applied for conditional use permits to allow for residential use in the rectory in the PSP District and to create a parcel less than one acre in the PSP District. So the purpose of these requests is to vacate North 9th Street, create one campus between the school and church, allow for future expansion of the school and church and to construction and the construction of a new rectory. Staff did identify in the findings of fact a number of instances in which the proposed land use permits are both for and against Brainerd Comprehensive Plan. I'll highlight a few. Housing Goal 1 Policy 3 Rehabilitate and/or replace substandard housing units with new units that are decent, safe, healthy, and affordable and of appropriate size to meet the city's current and future housing needs. The proposed rectory replaces older homes in need of repairs with a new dwelling that meets the needs of the parish and visitors to the parish. Policy 5 Ensure an adequate supply of quality and affordable housing units for current and future residents. The removal of three single-family homes negatively impacts Brainerd's housing stock at a time when there is a major need in the community to provide housing to residents. The need for housing is identified in the 2020 Crowing County Workforce Housing Study. Economic Development Goal 1 Policy 2 Invest in community improvements that will spur and revitalize and redevelopment in neighborhoods. Neighborhood schools and churches is important for creating community connections, attracting families, and spurring revitalization of surrounding homes. From the findings pertaining to the plats, preliminary and final, the improvements will not cause any public health problems. The development agreement would ensure that North 9th Street remains open for emergency services until the three single-family homes are demolished. This was a request by the fire department. The fire department did not express any other concerns about the vacation of North 9th Street. The city engineer provided his staff report regarding the street vacation and recommended approval, but did highlight that off-street parking spaces for the school and church would no longer be available. A utility easement would be maintained as utilities run down North 9th Street. This is a request of the engineering department as well as Brainerd Public Utilities. And then according to the findings, staff does recommend approval of the preliminary and final plat with contingencies that I'll discuss later. Pertaining to the rezoning, the applicant has proposed the rezoning of all parcels from TN1 District to PSP District. Places of worship and related buildings and public and private schools are permitted uses in the PSP District. The TN1 District allows for places of worship and related buildings and public and private schools as conditional uses. So St. Francis proposes to demolish three single-family homes and construct a large church rectory. The demolition would be allowed as Section 515-4-14 of the zoning code pertains to the demolition of dwelling units would not apply to the PSP District. Again, that prohibits the demolition of dwelling units. It's kind of a one-for-one requirement within that code. Pertaining to the findings for rezonings, the proposed uses are to be compatible with present and future land uses of the area. The property currently operates as a school and church. Schools and places of worship and related buildings are conditional uses in the TN1, which it exists in, and then also permitted in the PSP District. The proposed uses affect upon the area in which it is proposed. The applicant proposes a future expansion to the church and a significant expansion to the school. The school expansion will add a significant number of vehicles to the neighborhood during school hours, which may impact on-street parking for neighbors, for the neighborhood residents. The applicant has proposed, in addition to the existing school parking lot and diagonal parking along Ivy Street to accommodate the additional vehicles from the proposed school expansion. Again, traffic generation of the proposed use in relation to the capabilities of streets serving the property. The master plan indicates a drop-off zone and parent queuing pickup line similar to other neighborhood schools in Brainerd. And finally, staff does recommend approval of the conditional use permits based on the attached findings with no other conditions. Again, this is for creating a parcel under one acre. This is the one that the rectory is located on in the PSP District and for residential uses in the PSP District. City Council members asked St. Francis to provide a master plan before considering this request, which includes a vacation of North 9th Street. St. Francis has provided a master plan as attachment. Upon review, a master plan proposes fairly dense development that supports the functions of the school, church, and rectory. Based on the size of the site, St. Francis will most likely continue to utilize underground stormwater retention facilities, which allow for greater development of the property. They do utilize underground stormwater retention for that parking lot that's on the right-hand side for the church. However, staff did note there's nothing that binds St. Francis to the proposed master plan. Development would be able to occur subject to the rules and regulations of the zoning code and specific to the PSP District if rezoned. So with that, staff does recommend approval of their preliminary plat, final plat, rezoning, and conditional use permits with the following conditions. Approval and execution of the development agreement with the City of Brainerd. Approval of the vacation of North 9th Street between Ivy Street and Juniper Street, and that would be a city council consideration. And then just to note, all these requests require a public hearing.
Any questions of staff?
Yes. James, is there currently a property tax being collected on the three houses that will be demolished?
I believe the rectory doesn't. You may want to ask the applicants that question. I believe the rectory itself isn't, but perhaps the other two are.
Okay. So there will be a loss of property taxes?
Potentially, and I think that question would probably be best for the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? All right, and so then we'll be entering into the public hearing portion of this item for the preliminary plat, final plat, rezoning, and a conditional use permit for St. Francis School and Church. Before we begin, I just want to go over a few guidelines to ensure that the hearing goes smooth and easy. When I do open the floor for a public comment, please come forward to the podium and direct all comments, questions to the commission. Keep them specific to the item that is being discussed. Comments should be addressed...sorry. Comments should be addressed, again, to the commission as a whole. Each speaker will have approximately three to five minutes to speak, and as a public hearing, it is not a debate, and the commission is here to listen to the input and be respectful of others. Don't be disruptive. With that, I'll open the public hearing for the preliminary plat, final plat, rezoning, conditional use permit of St. Francis at 6:10. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm Ginny Knudsen. I'm here on behalf of Father Michael Gary, who unfortunately wasn't able to be here tonight. He's actually in Washington DC with the eighth graders from St. Francis School. And I was recollecting that this, I think, is the 14th year we've taken the eighth graders out to Washington DC for a kind of a graduation class trip. I am one of the two trustees of St. Francis Church and the Chair of the Finance Council, also a business owner, own two businesses here in Brainerd. Your neighbor across the street, Borden-Stenbauer-Kruger and Knudsen Office, and also Midtown Depot Gas Station. So just again, want to thank the commission. We have received a lot of very helpful information through this process. In the last round of meetings that we had, what we...St. Francis Church and School has experienced a lot of growth, and especially in the last number of years. And we've been in Brainerd for over 150 years and been in North Brainerd for, I believe, over, well over 100 years. We've been able to add on to the school in 2008, 2009 because we saw growth. We also added on to our church in 2019. And so the next project that we want to undertake is to have an adequate rectory for our priests. That's been the main impetus for all of the planning that we have in front of us. Right now, the priests are...there are two priests, two, you know, adult men living together in a single-family home that was built, I think, in, you know, over 100 years ago. It does not have private spaces for the individual priests. It doesn't have any guest quarters. If there are seminarians who come for school breaks or during the summer, if our bishop were to come and visit Brainerd, he wouldn't have anywhere to stay. And so we are looking to...also, we are doing a lot of planning for our school as well as for a rectory. The rectory is getting teed up. We would like to move forward with that, hopefully this year. The rectory...and I'll let Erica Markison, she's our architect and really been a great help with the master planning. She's also a parishioner. But we are also doing a lot of planning for our school. Our school is maxing out. We are hoping to add another kindergarten, and so we're working on some immediate plans for how we can have another kindergarten there. But we're also potentially adding a high school. And so to...so we've got a lot of kind of dominos that need to fall. Only one of them is really up here to go forward. So we're doing master planning so that we can show the city what our intent is in the future. I also want to acknowledge with us is our principal of our school, Jennifer Nagel. Also, our director of admissions and advancement, Carla Coonan. I know we've got Jared Bartle. He's on our principal's leadership team. He's been doing a lot of help with our planning. Maureen Pickar is here. She's our business manager. Some...Kevin Denae, my husband Chad, I think a few other parishioners are here as well too in support of the project. So we're trying to provide the city with a vision of what we hope to do. We want to make it a beautiful site. We are trying to preserve as much playground area as possible so that the kids have the right, you know, the right amenities that'll be open to the public, of course, as well too. So that's what we're presenting to you tonight, and we appreciate all of the feedback that we've gotten over the last few weeks as well. So I'll let Erica dive into some more details. And to answer the member's question, my business manager said that currently two of the three houses are rentals, and so we are paying some property tax on those rental properties. And those properties are...they are currently rented right now, but they are going to be for church use. They...we don't intend to...we intend to hold those properties, and so some way or another, they'll continue to be church properties used for church purposes to address the housing point that was brought up. So, thank you.
Thanks, Ginny. I want to say thank you also for the opportunity to speak tonight. We took the feedback that was provided to us from the last Planning Commission meeting as well as the last council meeting, and we are excited to present the master plan that we have up on the screen this evening. I do want to say one thanks or add a thanks to the city staff. We really have appreciated working with James and Jesse and any others that were a part of the behind-the-scenes work. It's...there's a lot of, as Ginny mentioned, there's a lot of moving pieces to this, and so it's more complex maybe than meets the eye from the master plan that's up on the screen currently. I do want to mention in the notes, just a quick clarification, on the adjacent uses and the adjacent zoning to the east listing, there is the Franklin Arts Center, as well as on the zoning, there's a general commercial that goes along with that Franklin Arts Center, just as a clarification to that, to the notes. So we, as I mentioned, we've...after the last council meeting, we kind of hit a pause button so that we could go back as a parish and assess and review through the feedback that was provided to us. And through that, we've come up with this master plan that you see on the screen. As Ginny mentioned, you know, really what spearheaded this was looking at improving the rectory. And so this master plan incorporates the rectory. It shows improvements or an addition, a future addition potentially to the church. The school, obviously, as Ginny mentioned, there is the need to expand immediately as well as then looking for, planning forward for the expansion to not only have...the school currently is pre-K through eighth, and we would be looking to potentially have that expand from pre-K to 12th grade then. So with that, obviously, the existing school as it stands, enrollment-wise, is in that mid-200s, give or take. And so by adding those additional grades, we are looking to increase the capacity potentially if someday it comes to the full capacity, would be basically doubling the enrollment as well as then the need of the spaces that would support that enrollment. Not only interior building-wise, which is what you see on the screen, the two additions off to the north of the existing school, those would house, you know, additional larger gyms because, again, with the increased enrollment, we would need the capacity to have that as well as then the support spaces that go along, increasing the size of the cafeteria, having an actual full-size commercial kitchen, and having all those along with additional classrooms to support having two sections of each grade to then support the higher grade levels of the ninth through 12th. Not only along with interior additional space needed, there's obviously the need for exterior site amenities. And as Ginny mentioned, you know, you'll see on the master plan, we tried to look at ways...we looked at many iterations. We've had a lot of dialogue back and forth as to the layout of this. It's kind of in our...I enjoy this. That's why I went into this industry. I love Tetris. So it's like, you know, you look at this, and there's a lot of block elements that we would like to work within this overall site. And you can see, I hope you can see by the master plan that we have laid out, that the street vacation is key to the success of this master plan. And so without that street vacation, we would be at a loss of certain site amenities because there's just not enough room on the two singular blocks if the street were to remain in place. We...so you can see that we've tried to keep intact the existing playground and the existing basketball court, along with some green garden areas to the north, and that's part of a grant program that was provided to the school. But you'll see then with the school additions, the ball field, the existing ball field needs to be displaced somewhere. And that's an important amenity to the overall function of a school so that the kids can have that outdoor experience. It's a...I consider it an outdoor classroom space, and so it's very critical and important to the success for those kids and also to wiggle off the jitters or just wiggle off the energy during the day as well. As part of this master plan, you'll see that we also heard and provided the feedback that was provided at the previous last two meetings was to accommodate parking for the expanded enrollment as well as, obviously, with that enrollment, there would be an increased staff needing to teach these students. And so we have laid out on the master plan where we have the existing parking lot that is to the east of the school. That would, in a sense, the capacity of that would remain. It would get reconfigured slightly so that we could incorporate a few additional parking spaces to increase the quantity there. And you'll see the count on the screen. As well as then along north, along the north side of the property on Ivy Street, we had some conversations with Jesse and discussed the fact of looking into adding some diagonal parking there. So we have that parking along with the parking that I just mentioned, and then the existing parking lot that's south of the church. Between those three parking space or areas, that provides enough capacity for the potential growth of the future staffing for the school. To the west, we have identified and earmarked an inset off of 8th Street for bus pickup and drop-off. And so currently, the bus pickup and drop-off occurs on the south side of the school on Juniper. But as part of this change with the vacation, street vacation on 9th, we looked at taking advantage of the long distance on Juniper to being that parent pickup, drop-off area for queuing, especially in the afternoon for the queuing of the parents for pickup of their students. The...to the north of the school, you'll see kind of a blue area, and that is what we're looking at potentially incorporating. When I mentioned the earlier grades, the younger grades, we would be looking at potentially a tot lot. James mentioned in the report that currently while the church has underground stormwater retention, the school also does. And so that existing storm, underground stormwater retention occurs under that blue area. And with, obviously, the expansion of the school, that would need to increase. And so that's what that additional green rectangle north of the blue area is identifying that we would, again, site land area is key, and we need to take and make the best use of all of that ground surface area. And so we would propose to continue to look at expanding the underground stormwater retention Then one other item that was mentioned both in this meeting last time and at the city council meeting was it was key to continue to have the pedestrian trans...pedestrian connection from the north side of the block through to the south side with the street vacation. And so you can see on the site plan or the master plan graphic that we have that blue kind of hatched line that occurs coming down across Ivy, along the east side of the proposed ball field lined nicely with some, you know, trees, kind of creating it like a boulevard in a sense, a walking boulevard, and then connecting down around the church, and then lastly, connecting across onto Juniper. And so that...I think I'll leave it at that for now because that gives you a good overview, and I'll just leave it then for questions when we get to that point. Or do we want...you'll wait?
Yeah, we'll do questions as far as for the applicant.
Okay.
After we have a little bit of a chance for anybody else that wanted to speak. Is there anyone else that wanted to speak for or against the item? Anyone online that would like to speak? If you would press star 3 to raise your hand. If you would like to speak on this item, if you're online, star 3. Or anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this? And I'll check with...I don't think they're pressing star 3. And then star 6 to unmute, if you would, but not seeing anybody that's online that wants to speak at this time. Any questions before I close the public hearing of the applicant? Yes?
I have a few questions. I don't know who wants to address the question. The first question would be, does the church school own additional properties on the north side outside of this area? Are there any other properties that have been acquired?
No. These are all the properties that we own. And then you can't see it, there's an existing parking lot on the south side. That's the only other area outside of what's shown.
Maybe a question for James? I don't know. I was...part of the argument that was put forth here said that it was talking about setting the comp plan and looking at rehabilitating homes as, you know, one of the goals that we have. And they said there were places, older homes in need of repair. Are the homes that you have right now, are they in need of repair?
Yes, they are. The roof on the current rectory is in very poor shape. The...as a part of the three-year process of looking into a new...what we're going to do with a rectory for the priests, we did evaluate all three of the houses and what would it take to rehabilitate, expand, et cetera. And it was determined that the best route would be to start with a new rectory because of the...and you can't see it on these plans, but what a rectory does and should do is provide each priest with their own smaller sitting area, bedroom and bathroom area. Currently, there you go, there's some pictures. This is a picture of the lower level, which would allow for guest rooms and some gathering space. And then the main floor has a small chapel, has a dining room, living area, kitchen, and also has a full suite with a sitting area, bedroom, and bathroom where potentially a retired priest could retire and live in the rectory, and then it would be fully accessible to that retired priest. You can see there's garage space. And then the upper level has three full suites. So if we had...we're blessed to be able to have three priests. Our...currently, we have at St. Francis, over 800 registered families, and our priests also service All Saints and Baxter. And I believe there's about 250 or so, 300 registered families there. So we have a huge need for priests. So that's why we're planning for the future, and that's why we did do a thorough analysis. I know Mitch Fierman from High Tech was part of that team in analyzing the buildings and what it would take. So we have, for the last three years, been analyzing just that question.
And maybe to add to that, I don't remember if it was mentioned at the last Planning Commission meeting or if it was at the city council meeting, but as Ginny mentioned, you know, they were analyzed, and we also looked at options where, you know, to potentially relocate if someone was willing to relocate those existing homes if it was possible and/or if that's not...while they've reached out and no one has had expressed any interest. The other option was we reached out to Habitat and would obviously look to have them involved with reclaiming anything potentially that could be reclaimed.
Thank you. That answers my question. I know there has been a Cetia at one point or a Saint Joe's kind of referred to having housing that they owned and saying it was in bad shape and they needed to take it down. And I'm thinking, but you own the housing. But it sounds like you guys have done a good analysis, and I appreciate that. The only...my last question, Chair, if I may ask one more question. Are you anticipating that the high schools...I assume you're expanding to high school. That's kind of what we're talking about?
That's...we're doing planning for that. It's in the future. I'm not going to qualify it more than that.
Okay. But then you're assuming, of course, the thing with getting high school kids, they don't take the bus, and they don't want mom to take them to school. They drive. And that's been kind of factored into the parking needs?
Yeah. So obviously, that's one item that, yes. You know, as the growth continues, capacity-wise, we would potentially need to look at and have further dialogue with the city about parking when it gets to that fuller capacity.
What would fuller dialogue mean?
Well, just discussions, you know, such as I know that there are some instances where if you're not expanding onto the building, then there's not necessarily... if you're not expanding onto the building, then there's not necessarily a requirement to increase your parking. And, you know, there's different items within the ordinance that indicate when additional parking is needed. And so we would continue to further, you know, take the calculations, work with the city to determine what the appropriate solution is, whether it's on-street parking or off-street parking.
The concern, of course, is that the parking is going to creep into the neighborhoods. And if you want to irritate neighbors, of course, the best thing to do is park your car in front of their house and that, but it sounds like you're, you're considering that. So thank you. Those are the questions I have at the moment, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Anyone else from the commission?
I've got a handful.
Yep.
So this is a, something that was brought up by another council member that I thought was a really thoughtful question. I think initially there was a, a side view rendering of the, the proposed rectory. And then later there was a second one that had more clapboard look. And then I would see this one, I believe, as a third or a different one. So I was going to ask if you could elaborate or clarify on what you're proposing here.
Yep, certainly. So as, as I alluded to, we've looked at many iterations to try to fit all of the site components as well as looking at the best way to orientate the rectory and make that all work on this overall site. And so what you have here, last time, the, as you're in, as you're referencing, last time, the elevations were premature. They had been submitted early on. And so the rendering is what actually was emulating or sharing, showing what the actual materiality is. That rendering that was shared last time is the same materiality that you see here on these exterior elevations. The only difference is, again, we had to look at the layout of that rectory and make that work with the site as well as trying to get enough space to work that ball field in as well. And so material-wise, from that rendering last time, you know, we have a steel roof that aligns with the materials that you see and are being proposed on these exterior elevations aligned with the church and the school. And, and many of the numerous homes in the area as well. So you'll see that there's stone, there'll be some different types of stone, lower band of stone, you know, it goes kind of higher up. There'll be some cast stone around the front entry that again emulates in a smaller scale the entry of the church as well as the south entry of the school. You'll have, the upper portion will be more of similar to the church where the upper portion of the addition that was just done in 2019 has that eaves exterior material that has kind of that stucco textured exterior that, again, aligns with materiality of other homes in the area.
Thank you. And Mr. Chair, I got a couple more questions. I can wait if others have or keep, keep going.
Just one question coming from Director Kramvik.
Yeah, I just wanted to add to that. You know, based on the last thing, we're just looking at the preliminary plat. Because the residential living is conditionally used permits directly tied to this rectory, does kind of lock this in now and the applicants were aware of that. So they did spend some time kind of finalizing some of these plans.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Another question I had is, and Max, if you could go back to the kind of the aerial map, the colorful map, I noticed that you have a proposed buffer kind of around the, between the proposed addition and the church and along where you described the, the pedestrian path. But I noticed there is not a buffer or a proposed buffer between the proposed school and the only adjacent residential property to the northeast. Could you talk about the, I guess, the, if the possibility of putting that, a buffer there for that other residential structure and/or why that was not included?
Certainly. That, as we continue to further develop these, that would definitely be something that we would take into consideration. We are always looking to be neighborly and so that would be, you know, I, I believe there's something in the ordinance that requires that specifically between a residential use and what would potentially be the rezoning of PSP.
Okay, thank you. And then just from this rendering too, I see the delivery bus curb pickup there on, on Eighth Street. It looks like that kind of covers over the sidewalk. Would that be, how would the sidewalk, kind of how would that, we don't want to give up a sidewalk.
Yeah, that's, I, I saw that too on, and the intent is to keep the sidewalk. The inset would be, basically that block of space is just indicating that it would be aligning that. And these are, again, conceptual graphics. And so when we get into refining, the intent is to keep the sidewalk.
Okay, thank you. And then, Mr. Chair, last question for me is maybe more of a comment to and on the council lead is onto the planning commission. So just kind of some of the things I've been hearing from other council members, you know, and this was said before and I think, you know, we can maybe look at this and think, oh, this would provide a, provide a community benefit, maybe be good, maybe good for the community. But as a planning commission and council, specifically regarding vacating the, the roadway portion, we need to not only demonstrate something that's maybe quote unquote, "good" for the community, but we need to demonstrate a, a public benefit. And if we're vacating a public right away, it's almost like a ledger, like you need to be able to demonstrate a public benefit. And while the school would be something that I, I would love to see happen and a lot of these elements I'd love to see happen, it's privately owned. And so it's maybe a technically a private, still a private benefit. Can you talk about and, you know, help us understand how this could be, you know, in, in really terms of almost, I look at it as like almost a ledger, to be really technical about it, like if the, the community taxpayers are giving up a public asset, what is the, the offset to that from a public benefit?
Certainly. I'll, I'll just add some, yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much for those comments and that's something we didn't touch on in our, in our presentation before, but the, the public benefit to vacating Ninth Street, I think that you, we can't underestimate the safety aspect of that. I think the city engineer did a really good job of laying out how Eighth Street is really the primary collector in that area and is the major transporter of people off of Washington Street to the neighborhood, to the, to the North Brainerd neighborhood. Also Tenth Street, I know I often will, I come from the east side of Brainerd, we live southeast of town, and turn off at Franklin Arts Center, curve around on Tenth Street. I think a lot of people also go down Tenth Street. And so I think that's another, really the main way that people get through to the north side, North Brainerd neighborhood is through Eighth Street and Tenth Street. The people, and I remember Angie Godich, who's a parishioner and lives on Ninth Street, just a couple blocks north, I remember how she talked, I can't remember if it was before the commission or the city council, how the people who do go down Ninth Street go down like bat out of hell and go really fast. It's a straight, it's a straightaway. We, the city, at our request, did put stop signs in on, at the north, so that people going on Ninth Street would have to stop as, again, we have children going across on Juni, or going across Ninth Street along Juniper three times a week to worship at the church building. Also, we have a lot of elderly parishioners and so to have an area where they can walk safely around the site and there's going to be parking where, you know, a lot of people do park in the parking lot next to the school. And they are elderly people who do that and they don't have to worry about traffic going along Ninth Street. So I think we really can't underestimate the public benefit to, you know, 250 kids and staff, 1,000 parishioners on a weekend, on Tuesday nights, 250 adults for our adult faith formation. Wednesday nights, we have about, I think about 150 kids and adults on Wednesday night faith formation. So I think that is a huge public benefit to eliminating that traffic hazard for our church and school community. Also, we're making sure that we maintain a ball field, which if you're able to go by St. Francis Church and School, anytime that church or school is not in session, there are always kids playing out on the playground and the ball field. And so having, being able to preserve a ball field in North Brainerd is, I think, a very important amenity that is, is open to the public. It's a beautiful calming boulevard that's going to be created. There'll be public spaces for walking. I, I know Father Michael is very much a aesthetics person and wants to make it a very aesthetic and beautiful area, a calm area, a peaceful area, potentially for public meditation outside. So that would be an additional public benefit. We, if you haven't had an opportunity to go into St. Francis Church, the exterior is beautiful, but the interior is beautiful too. It was built in 1934 after the, the fire had taken down the previous structure in 1933. And during the heart of the Great Depression, our parishioners gathered their pennies together and built our beautiful church. We want to make the site as beautiful as possible, as welcoming to the neighborhood and the community as possible. And so that's where Erica has done such a tremendous job and the other people have been involved with us to make sure that the integrity of our beautiful church is preserved by preserving the site and preserving, making sure that rectory is, is beautiful and mirrors the beautiful aesthetic of the church.
Yeah.
Oh, this is, yeah, Carla.
I'm Carla Cooten, the Director of Admissions and Advancement. And I guess I would like to say that one of the benefits as the admissions director is that we pull from not only the Brainerd area, but a 45-mile radius. There are people that are coming into Brainerd because of St. Francis School. And there are people who have moved into the area and have bought in the area of St. Francis School specifically because of our school. So I think that that is also a public benefit to the fact that our school brings in other communities into the Brainerd area because their kids are coming to our school. And so that's why I'm also saying it's a benefit for the public.
Yep. And maybe just one last thing to piggyback on what Carla just indicated. Obviously, as I expressed earlier, the expansion of the school and grade levels, there would be a need for additional teachers. And so, you know, from an economic standpoint, the development of this and the master planning for future expansion will create more jobs as well.
Any other? Yes?
So I have a few questions. First, the pedestrian circulation, do you guys have a firm plan of what that's actually going to look like? Is it just going to be a sidewalk, multi-use path?
Because we're in the early stages and we're just creating this master plan graphic. And we don't have any renderings or any specific drawings. We're not really to that level yet. But as Jenny, as Ginny indicated, the intent is to create a peaceful, serene boulevard, walkable. We're looking to just emulate what our church has to offer to the neighborhood.
Okay. And then vacating Ninth, I, I understand the pedestrian safety of that. There are a couple elements I'm seeing on the master plan that kind of counteract that. That pedestrian circulation you have running through parking, the bus pickup and drop off, leaving that as, as is, would probably be a safer environment because it would slow traffic. So it's just wondering if you could speak to that a little bit?
Let me, help me on the first one. You indicated that the pedestrian?
Yep, so the pedestrian circulation connection up on the north side, it looks like it's running through the proposed parking.
Yep.
Is that the plan or is there going to be daylighting there or?
So again, this is just kind of blocks of space. We would continue to further develop that and get where there's potentially like, and I'm not a civil engineer, I should know this term, but I'll just say like a boulevard or outset that will help, like more like an island, there's a better term, more like an island within the parking, once we get that all laid out, to have that connection. Because obviously it's beneficial to have a shorter distance from edge of block to edge of block for street crossing. And then, sorry, your second?
So the bus pickup and drop off?
Yep.
And I guess maybe this is more of a comment, but it would probably be a safer environment to not have the curb cut because then you're calming traffic with the buses when they're there.
So from our dialogue to date, and again, we'll continue to have dialogue with the city, but with our dialogue to date with the city and knowing that the, the upcoming improvements with 210, the, there'll be some changes happening with access off of 210 into this neighborhood. And because of that, Eighth Street is really going to become a primary, more heavily traveled corridor, a collector. And so with that, the thought was that we would, it would be better to have that inset to provide space for, currently we're figuring for a potential of four buses. It's, the school doesn't have as large of busing needs as some of our other elementary, neighborhood elementary schools. And so that is the reason why we looked at that, just for, again, allowing that traffic to continue to flow on Eighth Street. As well as then the thought of having it on the west side versus currently it being on the south is, again, to allow for a longer parent pickup queuing. Because we, as we know, these days, we have more, we have parents, more parents picking up their children versus riding the bus. And so knowingly, right now, in watching the existing queuing and how we have that queuing around the upper, along the east side of the block, along the north, and sometimes depending on the day or leading up to a holiday weekend, it may stack onto Eighth Street as well. So we took that into consideration.
Okay. And then my final thing is, it doesn't appear there's much room for snow storage. How many parking spaces are you expecting to lose in winter?
So the basketball, the existing basketball court, currently that's how, what gets utilized for when snow gets cleared out of that existing parking lot there. So we continue to look at something to that degree in that area.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Yes?
Well, there's a chance I do have one follow-up question.
Sure.
In regards to the, again, going back to the kind of the public benefit and thanks for your responses about, you know, potential increases to property values, economic value and potential provision of jobs. But, and, and this might be, I'll ask it to the applicant, but it might be for staff. The proposed pedestrian, I'll call it a sidewalk, kind of running through where North Ninth is shown to have been, would that be, and this, I think this is more for staff, like would the agreement, we would maintain that as like public easement or is that, would that be considered like a private sidewalk at that point? Or would that still be open for public use?
Probably, based on part of it maybe lying outside the easement area there, it would probably be considered more of a private walkway. I do know Harrison Elementary School has a walkway that kind of bisects it. There is no development agreement that stated that needed to remain public, certainly is used by the public. So I'd envision probably something similar to that.
Something similar to?
To what Harrison's currently operating as it's a technically owned by the school, but the public uses it.
Okay.
But, yeah, it may be difficult to put something into a development agreement on this proportion of it because a portion of the sidewalk may lay outside that, that easement as it goes around the ball field there.
Where it's currently proposed?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Chair, council member, just to comment on that is that it just, there's a, there seems to be a natural break between the school space and like the church space. And so that's why we purposely had the sidewalk going in that direction because there, there's going to be at different time, it just seems like a natural break to have a sidewalk there. And there's always going to be probably movement of pedestrians from that parking area on Ivy down to the church and whatnot. So I don't think the church would be opposed to any sort of public easement or anything like that. So we'd have to certainly talk about that, but as a trustee and finance council member, I don't, I don't see an issue with that.
And then I just have one question. The pursuit within your, your plat as to go with the PSP zoning versus just remaining with in the TN1 and using the conditional use permitting process as to facilitate, was there a reason why you pursued PSP versus just leaving it as TN1?
Certainly.
I mean, I mean, I think it just makes sense. I mean, that's what PSP is made for, is for church and school situations, so.
Yeah, I was gonna, yep, it aligns more with the use. We also, with, with the change overall, the surface coverage percentage aligns again with the use. And then, you know, the process for And then, you know, the process for future permitting, obviously, as with any project, it would continue to go through the city. Your, in this instance, you know, your staffing, your administration would be reviewing that. And so there would be opportunity for, you know, the city would have opportunity to review anything that's coming through permitting-wise.
All right. Any other questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Just got to follow up on the, on Ninth Street there. Have you given any thought to just having it straight through the property? Because that's where the street goes, that's where the public easement goes, that's where people have been walking for, you know, forever. And if you want, and people, even if you have a crooked path, a path that moves, people are still going to walk straight. That's just what they do. Has it been, any thought to keeping that corridor and kind of a nice, straight line just the way it's always been?
Yes. That, you know, we started off with that being a goal, because that is natural. But as you can see, again, those blocks of space, we, this, this was about the one and only solution that ended up working with all those spaces being able to remain. And so, you know, with a proposed ball field, you wouldn't necessarily have a walking path walking right through a ball field and?
Of course not. But my concern is that it's not going to feel like a street anymore. It's not going to feel like a public space anymore. It's going to feel like a private path that weaves through a campus. And that would be my concern. I think it should remain a public space, it should feel like a public space, and because it just should. It should feel welcoming and that it still belongs to the public. That's my thoughts on that. That's all I have, Chair.
Any further questions? And anyone online that would like to speak for one final time? Star three to raise your hand. And seeing none, I'll, thank you very much. I'll, oh.
I did, sorry, I just think of one thing that I forgot to mention early on, when I talked about the expansion of the school. Something, you know, obviously, St. Francis is a private school, but in working in the architecture industry and, and also working with public school, the Minnesota Department of Education has guidelines out there for schools. And we reference those regularly to just, again, they're guidelines. And one of the things I just would like to leave you with to think about is, in that guideline for through 12 school, they suggest, obviously, K through 12 school, looking at full, comprehensive track, field, all of those amenities that go along site lasting 35 to 40 acres. And so just to put that into perspective, we are currently working with 4.14 acres. And so we, again, are really trying to make the most improvements we can on the site that we have available to us, so, thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I'll close the public hearing for 411 10th Street at 653. And we'll bring it back to the commission. Any questions of staff before we continue with discussion here? I do have one question. As far as for staff, for Director Krambek, highlighting again for myself and the commission, the process as far as it relates to the difference within PSP versus TN1 and how that facilitates within the permitting process of the plat and future, I should say.
So, yeah, so I can explain the differences between the two districts. In the TN1 district, you're going to have maybe more stringent setbacks. The uses, both the church as well as the school are conditional uses, so every time there's going to be expansion either on the building or an expansion of use, say they convert and add classrooms, they'd be required to come and get a conditional use permit from the city. And the city would be able to apply potentially reasonable conditions as long as they meet the conditions in the allowed use section. And going to the PSP district, probably less, a little less stringent setbacks right now. I know the high school would be PSP district, college is PSP district, some of our churches, I believe Trinity is PSP district. So you're allowed maybe less stringent setbacks and then a higher impervious surface percentage, which they had mentioned here, they're kind of up against those impervious surface numbers for a typical residential area. So those are kind of the differences. And then also mentioning the findings of fact, the section that we have that requires kind of a dwelling unit replacement for a dwelling unit applies to TN1 district, does not apply to the PSP district. So they would be able to demolish the three homes to build the rectory. Again, rezoning is often more difficult than conditional use permits, so the city certainly has control on that. Staff doesn't view that as a way around the code, simply just a different way of approaching
Any other questions of staff?
I guess I have one. You know, they're doing all the underground utilities in front of the school, a couple, last year, year before. Is there proposed for the Ninth? So if they vacate the street and then they build their ball field and parking lot, is it going to get tore up within the next year or two?
So BPU or the city engineer did not call that out, that it would be replaced or needing to be replaced in the last couple of years. I'm not sure if city engineer Dean is still online or not, he may be able to answer that. Certainly that was not called out. Utility easement would have to be maintained on there as part of the development agreement. And really, the, the cost of replacement is on the property owner himself, that'd be part of the agreement. The city would not be responsible for replacing the parking lot or the ball field. Sean, I'm not sure if Jesse's on there?
Star six, Jesse. Mr. Dean, if?
Can you hear me, Mr. Chair?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we reviewed this with the proposal kind of early on in the process. There is a few utilities that run through there. None of them are in immediate need for replacement. The water, I would say, would be the one that we would want to watch very carefully over the more immediate time. It's not in immediate need of replacement by any means, but that one specifically only services those residential properties. So with that, that can be reconfigured differently. And then we have to put water main feeds from elsewhere that can, that can service everything else. So there's no immediate need by any means to replace any of the other underground utilities. We do have a storm sewer main that would have to remain in place with the utility easement that allows us to, if we ever had to do maintenance or replacement, allows us to go through and do that maintenance or replacement with that project. But we aren't identifying a project with that anytime soon.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dean. Any other questions of staff? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion.
Can we have some discussion first?
Oh, yeah. I thought that's where we were at, but discussion amongst ourselves.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, first I want to thank the presenters. I think you did, you've done a great job and you've pulled out, really worked very hard in pulling this project together. I do appreciate that. I live in historic southwest Brainerd, but I'm a north sider at heart. And I've seen over my lifetime, watched the north side just get eroded, just house by house, and it's tough to watch. And I, I think, I understand what you're saying, that, you know, the school will create business and will bring people in and help the community, but the point of our neighborhoods isn't to create business. The point of our neighborhoods is to raise families, to create community, to, to, to provide a place to live, a place that you love. That's the point of our, of our neighborhoods. And I just see, I've seen this with the hospital and I've seen this, I'm seeing this now, I see some very well-meaning, important institutions that because of their size, they just kind of have to keep moving out. And it's just, I just, it's like a house-by-house sort of process. And it's, it's tough for me to watch. And so, and then I have some concerns on Ninth Street. I think Commissioner Erickson had some good questions regarding the balancing act between you're losing the street, what are you gaining back? I'm, I'm not sure what we're gaining back. And I think my concern is right now with this path that going, that goes through there, it just, it's not Ninth Street at all anymore. Ninth Street effectively is closed. And I think that's, that's a loss to the continuity that's important to a neighborhood. So for these reasons, and also the housing, losing three, you know, well, three more houses, I personally will not be in support of this project. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anyone else?
Ready with a motion?
Okay.
I'd make a motion to approve the preliminary plat, final plat rezoning and conditional use permits with the following conditions. One, approve, approval of the development agreement with the city of Brainerd. And two, approval of the vacation of North Ninth Street between Ivy Street and Juniper.
I'll second that.
Okay. And discussion. As for me, I do appreciate the comprehensive campus design and master plan. I am apprehensive as to the fact that the, even within the conditions, there isn't a whole lot of adherence or necessary adherence to the master plan that the applicant has. They, also, I have kind of exposed my hand to that. I am more in favor of the idea of keeping it within a TN1, despite the fact of the enormous amount of labor that would be required of applicant to pursue that and some of the more costs that would end up being bearred by keeping it as a TN1. I'm still trying to weigh out at this time as to whether I'd be for or against the motion, but the, the asset that the, the campus and the applicant has provided to the community is invaluable, in my opinion. And so, still trying to figure out what exactly the best route is and what the most pursuant to the future of the community would be. Any other discussion?
Well, I'll just add, too, I mean, I, I think we can have discussion, we can debate about the finer points of the technicalities about, you know, what's a public benefit, what's not. I think it's a neat proposal. There's some things I'd like to see that are, would be different about it. But just as you said, I mean, I think the, I think the, I won't say public benefit, but I think the overall benefit to the neighborhood, to the community, for me, outweighs the, I won't even say negative draw, but the drawbacks of it. So for those reasons, I, I plan to support it.
Any further? One last rebuttal for me is, I believe that this specific item is exemplifying the necessity for a review and update of our comprehensive plan. As council has spent an enormous amount of effort and time as to address unhomed, how that is best, in personal opinion, and how that is best facilitated is through comprehensive planning and careful crafting as to creating thought-out measures for development continuing in the proper. The enormity, the enormity of the previous members of the commission that took on the zoning code and did an outstanding job, I believe, is much appreciated by me. But there is some nuances within some of the zoning code that was missed that could be addressed potentially with comprehensive plan, comprehensive plan update. At that time, and with nothing further from anyone else, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And opposed, same sign?
No.
And motion passes. Next steps, Director Krambek.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So this one's a bit unique. We discussed the schedule with the applicant. Because we're considering the rezoning here as well, it requires a first reading. So the first reading will be done on June 2nd to consider the rezoning. And then the entirety of everything, preliminary plat, final plat, the final reading, rezoning, and the conditional use permits, as well as the vacation will be considered at the June 16 city council meeting.
All right. And if necessary, I think we can take just a brief moment, a two-minute recess for letting any of applicants and friends, if they wanted to leave, they can. And I'll bring the commission meeting back just shy of two minutes. And moving on to item 6B.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is pertaining to the outdoor sales ordinance. So at the April 16th Planning Commission meeting, the commission directed staff to proceed with the ordinance with recommended changes. Staff did make a slight adjustment to the definition of a but from the last draft to include local street, minor street, collector's street, or major collector's street in addition to the alley. Screening would not be required for arterial streets such as Mill Avenue. Staff did hear concerns unrelated to this item, but concerns about how this may impact other uses around some of our residential roads. So staff is recommending that slight addition to that. So with that, staff recommends holding the public hearing and recommend approval of the ordinance as presented.
All right. And with that, we'll open, sorry. We'll open the public hearing for, let me get back to it. For the proposed ordinance amendment to sections 513-3-6 and 515329 and 51562.B.1. And open the public hearing at 7:07. Would anybody like to speak to the item? And I am now not seeing anybody online. And, all right. And we'll close the public hearing for listed items of 6B at 7:08. And bring it back to discussion either of staff or commission. Any questions for staff? Otherwise, great job, staff. Any, go ahead, Director Krambek.
Yep, and then I guess we'd just be looking for a recommendation to move this to council.
And seeking a motion for or against.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion in favor.
Second.
And any further discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. And moving on to item 6C.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this item pertains to specifically the general off-street parking ordinance change and then also an amendment to the parks as well. So the purpose of this ordinance to allow for parking surfaces other than concrete or patuminous in the general industrial zoning district and park district as constructed. It's really meant to allow potentially for class five or crush concrete behind some of our general industrial uses, as oftentimes you'll have maybe existing class five parking lots that they want to add on to, that really is common sense to potentially add on to it, or just allow a business to expand some of their uses in a, in a more favorable manner economic-wise. So with that, staff does recommend holding the public hearing and recommend approval of the ordinance.
And any questions of staff before opening the public hearing? I have one. And just to clarify for my own sake, this is only rear of those subjects, correct?
That's correct. It'd be in the rear. We have definitions for rear yard, and then I do put provisions on there if it's potentially kind of a double frontage type situation.
All right. And we'll open the public hearing for- And we'll open the public hearing for proposed ordinance to amend section 515-4-12 at 7:10. And if anybody would like to speak on the item? And a second call for anyone wanting to speak on the proposed ordinance amendment of section 515-4-12. And a third call, third and final call for anyone? And we'll close the public hearing for amendment of section 515-4-12 at 7:11. And any questions of staff? Otherwise, seeking a motion?
Move to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Oh, who's claiming it? Sounds like Commissioner Erickson. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. And the motion passes. Next steps, or do you want to just move on to 7A?
We can just move on to
7A it is.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, this is a variance request for an accessory structure at 2517 Greenwood Street. Teen Challenge has submitted a variance request for the construction of an accessory structure off Greenwood Street in the front yard. Variances, so these are conditions for variances. Variances may be granted when the applicant for the variance established there are practical difficulties in complying with the zoning ordinance. The property does have a significant amount of stormwater retention and wetlands surrounding the existing parking lots and buildings. There really is not an alternate location for placement of the accessory structure behind the primary structure. There are some alternate areas potentially in the front, and I'll discuss that later. The location of the stormwater retention areas and suspected wetlands are provided in the aerial map. I did conduct a site visit on this one to ensure that that's accurate. If the variance is granted, it will not alter the essential character of locality. The construction of this accessory structure will not alter the essential character of the locality, as the proposed materials are consistent with the primary structures on-site and the neighboring properties. The proposed location behind a vegetated buffer and upon a site visit is the best location for placement in the front yard. Staff does recommend approval of variance request with the following conditions: a vegetative buffer between the proposed accessory structure and Greenwood Street must be maintained, removal of invasive species, removal of dead or diseased vegetation, general maintenance are permitted, and then the driveway must be paved with batuminus or concrete surface. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
What's the difference between a wetland and a suspected wetland?
I put suspected wetland in there because there's not a wetland delineation on it. When I visited the site, certainly took a look at the indicator species that you'd see typically in a wetland, and definitely was consistent with what a wetland would have. It just isn't a survey with a delineate wetland on there.
So, it's not an official wetland?
Not an official.
Okay, that's all I needed to know. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions of staff? And with that, we'll open the public hearing for let me get back up there. The variance request for accessory structure at 2517 Greenwood Street at 7:14. And applicant, if you would like to address the commission with a synopsis?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, commission. I mean, as you can see by the map, this proposed garage is really the only space that makes sense. If you go to the, to the east, there's, it's really the only place we could potentially expand in the future, and there's wetlands all around. You know, we attained this property a couple of years ago and have added, you know, a program there, and really, this garage would be used to store some mowing and snowblowing implements, and then some dry storage, as the interior storage spaces all been used primarily for residential uses in the buildings that are actually there. Otherwise, your description, I think, was spot-on, and I don't really have anything else we'd like to add at this time.
Any questions of the applicant? From the question?
Minor question. So, 371 basically runs at the bottom of the map. Is that where 371 is? I'm just trying to
Business 371 would be to the south quite a ways, but yeah.
Quite a ways, okay. All right.
I mean, it's the bottom end of a 40 there that it comes to.
Okay.
There's below there, there's like more wetland, and I believe it's part of a snowmobile trail to the south of there, too, and then that property we own as well, but.
That's all I got.
Anything else state is?
This is our maintenance man, Greg Van Hall.
And just a name and association?
Greg Van Hall.
Yep.
The trees between where we're putting the garage and Greenwood Street, there's two great big oak trees in there. We've talked to arborist, and he recommends those big trees come down, but we would plant something in there to replace if we need to keep a wall in there. And worried about the integrity of the trees, if a windstorm comes down, we wouldn't want those on the garage right away.
All right. Think we're good for now. Any one else that would like to speak on the subject? And one third and final call. And we'll close the public hearing for variance. Is it a variance?
That's correct.
Yep. Consideration of variance at 7:16. And any questions for staff or discussion from the commission? Otherwise, seeking a motion? Yeah.
Move to approve with staff's recommendations.
Second.
And any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. And motion carries. And next steps?
Yes, this is for the applicant, so this is a recommending body. The recommendation will be forwarded to the City Council meeting on June 2nd for final consideration.
All right. And then item 7B.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, this is regarding the allowed use table. This is listed under one of the priorities for the Planning Commission. Certainly, staff believes that this potentially aid in economic development and allow some of the regulatory processes to be mitigated for businesses coming to Brainerd. So, a few highlights: staff added uses to the industrial district and deregulated some of the existing uses. Some things went from conditional use to permitted use. Certainly tried to look at things that might have a major impact on neighboring properties, leaving those as conditional use permits. Wanted to note, staff will make adjustments to towers and antennas at the June 18th meeting, along with a few other small adjustments we're working on. So, what staff is really looking here for is the commission to discuss the allowed use table and provide some general feedback to staff. Really is staff moving in the right direction regarding some of the deregulation of uses and added uses. Some of those also include potential churches. That's been brought up in previous meetings for conditional use permits, as well as childcare centers, really allowing maybe those be permitted on some of those larger zoning district sites that we have in our zoning code, but still requiring conditional use permits in our neighborhoods. And then, kind of finally, staff will be asking for more detailed responses at the June 18th meeting after the Planning Commission has had really a month to take a look at this, so I wouldn't be looking to move this to any type of a public hearing recommendation to council, but just kind of a first review for Planning Commission. With that, I can answer any questions.
Any questions of staff? Director Krampick, I, I did have one as I was reviewing. Within the table that I saw, as far as office businesses and permitted use under TN2 and TN3, I do appreciate the holding back from TN1 as making that permitted, but it, moving from conditional to permitted within those two traditional neighborhood zonings, was there a mindset behind that?
So, I'm not quite finding in here, but I saw office, oh, here we go, okay. Office business in TN2. So, TN3 is something that's really similar to a PUD work through, kind of through a council process. TN2
I don't know of a TN3 that we have right now.
We don't have any. Yep, so, and yeah, that's kind of approached more like a PUD almost. So, within the TN2 district, oftentimes you'll find, you know, different attorney's offices or, you know, kind of small offices, so thinking that might be easier to allow office business in the TN2 district for something like that as permitted rather than conditional use may be appropriate, but again, could be something larger, you know, maybe a medical clinic. Again, really, our TN2 districts aren't really large properties, so you're probably looking at something that's going to be smaller anyways. So, that was kind of staff's process through is not having to put, say, an attorney's office that wants to move in along Oak Street through a conditional use permit process.
My rebuttal ends up being within the necessity as to retain dwelling units and create more housing, as to the making sure that we're not losing housing even within that transitional period of, you know, TN1 and the general business corridor kind of zones that we end up having where the TN1 abuts them, and we oftentimes use a TN2 to do that. Making sure that we're not using dwelling units as to transition into a office-type thing and losing the housing. That's my only rebuttal as to making sure that we keep it as a conditional use process rather than a permitted use process.
So, yeah, if, you know, if there's clear direction from the Planning Commission and that everybody else feels that way as well, we could go in that direction and just change that right now, or we could just kind of leave it for you guys to think about for the next meeting.
That's just my one highlight that I my first hot take.
Yeah, I don't disagree. I think that's a good point, but maybe we could give it some time to stew on that if others feel the same. I was, if I could?
Yes.
I like the direction, particularly just a few things here. Accessory buildings under 200 square feet shed, I think is essentially what the layman would call that. Administrative permit basically across the board. And then the single-family attached dwelling permitted and a lot more, so I like the expansion there. And then, just picking out a few highlights here, too, is we've had some recent activity, a couple of requests for farmers markets, so I see that been expanded as well, so you're looking for direction on just overall, and I like the overall direction.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I like the direction it's moving as well. Just keep density in mind. I noticed drive-throughs, I guess I'd like to see those more restricted. I guess I'd like to see them as a CUP and general commercial and commercial corridor and permit and makers and employment and general industrial without being allowed in other zones. The other thing I wanted to draw attention to right away is daycare. I think you have it listed as a conditional use permit with all the licensing and everything required by the state. Wondering if that should just be permitted in all zones, especially with the shortage we see. And I guess I see a lot of discussion we could have on this, and I would definitely be open to a workshop on this if other members are as well.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm not opposed to the idea of a workshop on it. Would we want to make it one topic, or are there other topics in this that we could kind of work into it? James, do you have any ideas of other topics that would fit into it? Anything else on our agenda that were on our itinerary?
So, if we were to do a workshop, we could potentially, you know, kind of work in maybe some overall things we want to see in our Shoreland District. Eventually, I'd like to work some of our uses in our Shoreland District into our allowed use table, so everything's kind of consistent in one area. But again, there's a lot of Shoreland District regulations out there between different municipalities, and just kind of getting a general sense of what the Planning Commission kind of wants to see, what you can do on your lakeside is probably one of the biggest ones. You know, it could be a potential topic of discussion, and then something that, I was going to mention my staff report that we'll be bringing probably to the Planning Commission at the next meeting, is some signage requirements, really some design standards surrounded from signs, so that could also be a potential thing or a discussion at a workshop.
Yes.
In that same vein, preliminary comprehensive plan discussion? Brainstorm, I don't, it's come up a time or two, so maybe we could talk about just little ideas out for other topic?
I I'm always extremely leery of workshops, personally. I know. I love discussion, but at the same time, workshops end up sometimes not being as efficient as potentially possible use of time. And it also ends up being one more meeting that we all need to attempt to attend within a period of time. It does. So, within this specific item, it could potentially push this item further back as being an item that we could accomplish in a reasonable amount of time, but there is a number of things that should be thoroughly flushed out within the table. I'm not opposed strongly. It's not a hill that I want to die on. Go ahead.
One potential option would be if there's maybe a general consensus that the Planning Commission's open to a workshop, staff can kind of take a look at how many things we might have on our next agenda as applications come in, cutoff date is on the first. You know, if we, if we have a bunch of items that we have to review at Planning Commission, maybe staff sends out a poll to see if people are available for a workshop. If we don't have a lot of items on the agenda, perhaps we just do it at the meeting.
I think that's a beautiful idea.
I like that idea. I was actually going to suggest, you know, if we could have the workshop before or after a planning, you know, that way we're all here and it wouldn't be a separate date, you know, if it could work it in. If you do it before, you've got an automatic cutoff, so. But I like your idea better, so.
Amen. Staff, you have enough. Okay. Moving on to item 7C.
So, just wanted to have kind of a clarification here. With the workshop, would the work, you know, so if we, not a bad idea, presented by council member Erickson, maybe it's held afterwards as a potential?
Okay.
So, we'll, so we can work through that, you know, if we do go a workshop route, you know, would we allow others to potentially speak at the workshop on ideas?
I would welcome as much info as I possibly can get.
Sounds good. Okay, on to C.
Item 7C, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, this is amending the Planning Commission bylaws, and this was really directed by the Planning Commission, so based on the last meeting. Staff recommend the commission approve moving public forum after the approval of minutes.
And this is one of the items that I had asked for, and I am glad to see it here. As far as any other questions from commissioners of staff or myself?
Questions about moving the item?
Moving the item within the bylaws, so that way we end up moving it within the order of the meeting. And it's just moving public forum to be immediately after the approval of the minutes.
Just the part of being consistent with the City Council?
That's, that is the focus of it.
Okay.
Otherwise, be looking for a motion.
Move to approve.
Okay. And anyone for a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, same sign?
Aye, just to be difficult.
All right. And moving on to item?
7D.
7D, yes, the item that we added.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, this is consider revising corner lot fence requirements for corner lots that abut an alley. So, council voted for the commission to consider revised language for fences on corner lots that abut an alley. Councilmember Johnson had a constituent reach out with concerns regarding fence standards specifically for corner lots. Both councilmember Johnson and myself met with that constituent. So, according to fence standards of the zoning code, fences may be located in any yard up to up to a height of four feet, essentially up to their property lines. Fence up to six and one-half feet high may be erected from a line extended from the front facade of the principal building to the side lot lines, and then along the side lot lines to the rear lot line. So with that, corner lots have two front facades as the houses face two streets. Corner lot property owners consistently have issues with the construction of backyard privacy fences. The fence often bisects a property, splitting the backyard in half. So I wanted to mention a slight edit from what's in the packet. Staff proposes potential code language to remedy this issue. So for corner lot properties, if their rear yard abuts an alley, a fence up to six and one-half feet high may be erected from a line extended from the rear corner of the principal building to the side corner lot line, and then along the rear lot line to, or along the side lot line to the rear lot line. So staff included a picture of their proposed language. You'll see the first one is as currently constructed in the zoning code. You have to take it right from the facade and go straight back to the rear property. So you'll see the first one is constituent that reached out, kind of bisects a property in half. The other one's kind of an extreme situation, property that's directly across the alley from it, really cuts almost all the property off there when you line it up with the facade. So the proposed language, if it were to be amended, you'll see you'll go from the rear corner of the property out to the side corner property line, and then back to the rear line. It'll still be subject to some of the provisions of, there's a section D in there. So it'll still have to look for sight lines, would still have to be located technically four feet off of that alley property line. But you'll see kind of the difference with those aerial photos of what the proposed code language could look like. So with that, staff's looking for some feedback from the planning commission, and then potentially to move this forward for an amended code and public hearing at the next meeting.
Any further questions of staff? I'm sorry, can you say what your recommendation for commission is again?
So recommendation would be to have staff move forward with the proposed language, and then hold a public hearing at the next meeting.
All right. Otherwise, seeking a motion if there's no questions?
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
And any further discussion?
I just want to say, I really like this. I've been approached several times over the years with very similar situations, and I know it's been very frustrating for certain property owners and who find themselves in this situation, so vote in favor of it.
All right.
I got to say, as someone who lives on a corner lot and is thinking about replacing their fence, I absolutely love this.
Is this just consist of the ones with alleys, or, no, North Brainerd, there's a lot without alleys that are on the same situation?
I will let staff tackle that.
Yeah, and I wanted to kind of expand on that. Good question there. So the reasoning for that is when you're really abutting an alley, oftentimes you'll get a garage placement like this in a lot of instances. A lot of times, they don't even want to really bring it back to the alley, but the alley is really that buffer between your rear yard and the neighbor's property. So what you'll have oftentimes, if there isn't an alley there, you might have a corner property like this that is right next to somebody's front yard. So you'll get, you know, potentially a six-and-a-half-foot fence that runs along that property line, and then is really in the neighbor's front yard. So, you know, based on what those sites look like and how they abut each other, there'd be potential for variances if it would work for that situation, but it would give the neighbor an opportunity to review it and the city council to consider whether or not there'd be a major impact on the neighbor, and certainly if there'd be practical difficulties. So there's still an avenue for it, but really, it probably works in this situation, but maybe not in all situations.
All right. I believe I heard a first and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? All right, and on to item 8. Public forum. I'll go ahead and open the Brainerd Public, Brainerd Commission, Brainerd Planning Commission, public forum at 7:34. And seeking anyone that would be willing to speak about any item that is not on our agenda that they would like to let the Brainerd Public, sorry, Brainerd Planning Commission know. I'm just trying to kill time. Second call?
Be the last opportunity before it moves in the agenda.
Yeah, it's going to forever move. Well, not forever. For the immediate, yeah. Until council decides to. And a third and final call for anyone that would like to speak at the public forum of Brainerd Planning Commission. And, yeah, I'm just, 10 more seconds.
I'm ready to go home.
I know. Trying to move fast. And we'll close the public forum at 7:36. And on to item 9, staff reports.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I did already mention that staff has been working on a draft ordinance for sign standards, really looking at design standards for them. Potentially wanting something to be three-dimensional signage to enhance some of those standards, as well as trying to limit permanent banners that are really in our downtown and along some of our major commercial areas. So that's kind of the thought process behind that. Also, wanted to inform the planning commission that council directed staff to move forward on drafting ordinance to enhance code enforcement. The amendment would allow staff to actively monitor major corridors and then also around parks at 300 feet, as well as capture violations on our way to building inspections. So typically, what we're seeing is couches, mattresses in the front yard in those instances. With this, though, we would not be hiring an intern to drive up and down every street and alley like we did in the past. With that, that's everything I have.
All right, and on to item 10, commissioner member reports. I'll start off to my left.
Nothing further, thank you.
I have nothing.
Commissioner Corr.
I want to say it's, I think the code enforcement action by the city council is good. I would still personally like to see it go further. Hopefully, it's a good first step. I think we're still in a situation where we're requiring neighbors to narc on neighbors, and I think that's kind of uncomfortable as far as, you know, reporting violations. I remember the days of the interns going up and down the alleys. It was a pain in the butt, but you know what? Things never look cleaner. They just never look cleaner as far as organized and piles of stuff. And you can just tell that it's been years since there's been active code enforcement. If somebody walks a lot, you just start to see, you can just see it everywhere, things just piling up and stuff. And so I think it's a good first step, and hopefully we go a little further as we go, so, great. That's all I got.
I got nothing.
And I do not have anything to add. Seeking a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Sorry.
All right.
Hi.
Don't discuss.
I'm voting, I'm voting.